I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Has council had the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from February 21st? And if so, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 21st.
I'll second.
Motion from Robin, second from Mike. Those in favor may state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Changes to this evening's agenda. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the set agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Mike, second from Becky. Those in favor can state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Guess an open forum. Seeing no one for guess an open forum, we'll move into committee reports. Fireboard.
Fireboard. Okay, so, everything's looking good there. We went through the financials. Like I said, looking good. There's gonna be a couple things that we're talking about with maintaining some of the building that we're looking into. And we're still, as we know, which takes time, looking through the JPA process, so we're still in the midst of that, so. That's about it. The fireboard.
How about Park and Rec?
Park and Rec, we had a pretty good meeting. The Becker Youth Baseball Association made a presentation to us. They came up with a very good plan on some improvements on the BAC. They've applied for a grant to help pay for it. And we're waiting to see if they get the grant money of $15,000. And if they do, then they're also gonna put some money in, and we would put the rest in, of course, because we have to match the grant. And make some nice improvements, and they come up with some really good ideas. It was a good discussion. Nothing's happening at this point, but...
What's your timeframe?
Pardon?
What is the timeframe? Like, we find out by June or...
This month.
Oh, wow.
By the end of this month, we'll know if they get the grant.
Okay.
And then if they do, we actually would do some of the work this spring.
You're nice.
Let's see what else. We talked about the community park buildout around the community center with the pavilion and whatnot. About getting a new storage building out there, and in a different location, of course, because the ones that are there are kind of falling apart. And that's pretty much it. Nothing, no decisions were made on anything.
How about Planning Commission?
Funding Commission, we had a public hearing on. Anybody that wanna guess?
Chapter 11.
Chapter 11.
Chapter 11. Got some edits. Those are on our 8 Alpha for tonight. We also talked about more edits, too. Chapter 11. And that was in regards, last month, we had talked about special event uses permits. So we had some discussion, and staff have come back with some ideas this month on some revisions for that, so we will have another... In case you missed last month or the month before, we will have another one next month. In case anybody needed to know why we were doing, why we went out for proposals a couple weeks ago on the code edits, this is the kind of, what happens, you know, when you don't have those code edits in place. You do a lot of little hodgepodge's like this, so. We also had a few updates, like on the AUAR, Avalon Estates staffing, and then the BRECC application that we added.
All right, Gulf Committee.
Gulf Committee. So, everything's looking great there. As far as financials, we're above where we were last year, so that's good news. A couple of things that are coming up is the open house, which will be on the 18th. Also during the open house, I don't know if you guys have seen it, they kind of social media blasted it, but they're doing like a sip and shop kind of thing that same day, so just local vendors and stuff like that will be there. We did briefly talk about how Concert at the Creek has already been set for the 1st of September, which is that Labor Day, that Friday. So it's gonna be the same entertainment as it was last year, so. Armadillos with Chris Hockey, so.
All same bands?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow.
So yeah, so, that's about it with gulf.
And Josh is gonna be here for a presentation, isn't he, for the scooters?
That was last month.
That was last week. We just talked about how we're for sure gonna make it 18 and over.
Oh, yeah, we do have a, we did come up with a recommendation.
Yes, recommendation of the 18 and over with the scooters.
Or your policy.
Yeah, but we're still waiting for legal.
For contracts on that.
How about Police Management?
Police Management, we met last Friday, which was postponed due to snow on me a couple weeks ago. We had an update on staffing, still, still sitting pretty good with staff, but we had an update on that. Talked about stats, they're up slightly from the year before. DUIs noticeably up, and also medical, calls for medical assist. Or medical calls, I should say. We had a, also had an update on the facility worker group. As you know, the chief's been an active part of that, so updated the group on that. And that was about it.
Okay. All right, any other committees? Moving into Board Committee and Consultant Reports. Chapter 11 amendments. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm not gonna promise the last two, but hopefully the last one of two before we get through the comprehensive rewrite. So tonight before you, we have an ordinance 269, and second series in summary. And what this is, is with the annexation of the 35.42 acres, we noticed in our code that it's not very clear. It allows for single multifamily, some four and six plexes, but it doesn't make it very clear on some of the lot dimensions and sizing for those individual uses. So what this is, is really to ensure, the reason it's coming forward now is to ensure that if that property develops in the near future and gets sold, that we don't have any confusion within the zoning district. What would be the standards is in the ordinance, under subdivision 6, would be adjusting the single family detached to 8625 square feet for a minimum lot. And again, that's slightly less than an R1, but again, this is a mid-density. And the setbacks, or the widths for interior lots as well. Two-family dwellings would be 15,000 square feet, and then other multifamily dwellings would be the same as what's currently in there. Setbacks have been adjusted to reflect the same as an R1 district. They were 15 feet, they were greater than the R1. Didn't make a lot of sense. And then just some clarifications on maximum height and number of accessory structures to match with that R1 district. It's just, again, this is a little bit more dense, but the dimensions should apply. So with that, we're seeking for a motion and a second approving ordinance 269, second series, and second series summary for publishing. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
We do not have any comments at Planning Commission, or...
Correct, yeah, no public comment. No written comment either.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion approving ordinance 269, second series.
I'll second that.
Motion from Becky, second from Mike. Those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
And then I'll make a motion approving ordinance 269, second series, summary for publishing.
Second, Pat.
Motion from, from Mike. Those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was like, just having fun. Let's get it all out, guys.
I don't need to.
We must be too close. We must be too close to Ohio.
Oh, good, yeah.
Oh, jeez.
All right, Administrator and Staff Reports. Excel Energy, City of Becker, AUAR, Mr. Sanders.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Council. So, for you tonight, we have Resolution 2318. Over the past year, we've worked with Excel Energy on an alternative urban area-wide review, which is an environmental tool that looks at development scenarios, different development scenarios, and how they'll impact the environment as the development occurs. It's gone through all of the statutory publishing requirements and the revisions that were requested by the state agencies and republished. So we've gone through all of that, and the next step is to proceed with adoption of the document. It is, since the City of Becker is the responsible government unit under statute, it is required to be adopted. It will be required to be updated every five years. The Planning Commission will review the master plan. It was, we wanted to put the master plan at the same time as AUAR, but we wanted to bring it to Planning Commission for their final review and approval on that, and then we'll bring it to council at the 1st of April. So that's the other piece of this that goes along with the AUAR. Planning Commission had a chance to review this back in November 22 with no comments, and we're seeking for a motion and a second adopting Resolution 2318, which adopts the Becker, Excel Energy, Becker Alternative Area-Wide Review. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2318, adopting the Excel Energy, City of Becker, AUAR.
I'll second that.
Motion from Rick, second from Mike. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Approving plans and specs for the 2023 street improvement and authorization for bid. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor Council. As you are all aware, we've been working on our street improvements for the last five, six years, trying to play a little catch-up, so we've taken a methodical approach to this. And this year, we're coming back, looking for a little bit of segmented work throughout our community, because we've got several streets that we're trying to work on. So this year, what we're trying to target would be Third Street from Edgewood Street to Brenda Boulevard, Brant Avenue, Brant Court, Brenda Boulevard from Edgewood Street to Third Street, Prairie Road, Forest Drive, and Parkview Avenue from from Brant to, sorry. Forest Drive from Parkview Avenue to Brant Avenue. Along with, over on the east side of town, Metal Arc Boulevard, Metal Arc Court, Morning Dove Drive, and Dawson Court. Along with that, Morning Dove Drive brings us into the BAC. So staff, we've been, one of the biggest complaints we get over at the BAC is the dust bowl that's created over there. Knowing that we're not going to expend funds to pave that parking lot, what we would like to try and do, and we've put it into the bid process since we're over on Morning Dove, is to extend the paving into the drive lane a little bit that gets you into the parking lot. And we would do that off of Meyer Street as well, from the west side entrance as well. So it's about 75 feet, as the plans would call out for that, just to try and get people in there. It does another thing for us. It keeps the gravel a little bit more in the parking lot or on the edge of that street, and it avoids it from coming into our storm drains as well. So it's not a huge component of the project, but I think it'll fit within the budget that we've got placed there. Along with this project, we also have two alternates that we would put out for bid for consideration. Alternate A is improving the north parking lot at the community center. As you recall, Avalon Estates is building out there, and we're turning the backside entrance, which was never dedicated as a street. We will actually dedicate that as a street, and that'll tie into Avalon Estates. That'll bring you all the way around and bring you over to County Road 23. But that north side parking lot, we've kind of been in a holding pattern for a couple of years on that as to what we want to do. So the far northwest corner, the curb, has never been put in place. It's just a sheet of paving. So we, the proposal calls out for curb and storm to collect there as well, and to tie all that in with the new entrance over there. Alternate B is addressing the changes that have been proposed on Hancock Street as it relates to the old fire hall with the proposed work with the township. So we've isolated those because that would be a shared project, so we want to make sure that we keep those quantities and dollars separate. So everything here, we've talked about that. We've tried to get this three-year plan in place, so we really feel good about being ahead of the game and taking this out for bid, pending approval tonight, seeing where the bids come back in. I will say, on a few other projects that we've bid so far, we're seeing some of our numbers and quantity values coming back down a little bit, which has been good to see. So hopefully, we can continue to stretch those dollars and put these projects in place for this year. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
The 75 feet you're gonna go into the parking lot at the BAC?
It's really not into, it's the drive lane towards the parking lot.
But the purpose of that is to keep the dust down for the homes that are there?
Because we're so close to the residents there and the trailer parks, yes.
What do you think about going a little farther than that?
We could, depending on when the bid comes back, because it would be a quantity price at that point. So it wouldn't be like we'd have to go out there. If we saw that it was favorable.
I'm questioning if 75 feet is enough, that's why.
Yep. Yeah, we didn't want to be greedy on that, because there's washouts there. They're both on curves. So it does get a little washboard-y, and the maintenance is a little bit more needed there. But we didn't want to go too far with our dollars, not sure where the budget was gonna go. So we could definitely look at that if this goes through, and just look at the quantities and see what it would look like.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
One of the things, too, with that is, you know, as we've used the, what do they call it, Jersey barriers, whatever, over the years, we've changed directions on that before. If we lay tar down, that kind of locks us into a certain pattern, so if we go too far, we're stuck on one.
Yep, that's a really good point. We've tried to narrow those, kind of neck those down, and stretch them out a little bit, so people didn't have that kind of direct diagonal shot, and using that as a thoroughfare. So when you come off a Morning Dove, you gotta make that curve and drive up further to get past the Jersey barriers before you can head west going across the parking lot. Because speed's been an issue there, or a concern. But by doing that, we've shut that down quite a bit, because they've gotta come in, take hard rights and hard laughs to get through there. So it's helped with the traffic flow. It's not as easy of a path through. And with us closing it off during the winter, it's hopefully curbing some of those caught across commuters, so.
Plenty of snow this year to block it off.
That's, that's not been our issue, right? It's not stopping anytime soon either.
I'll make a motion, excuse me, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2319, accepting plans and specs for the 2023 street improvement project and authorizing staff to take them all for bid.
I'll second that.
Motion from Rick, second from Mike. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
Just one more comment on the street side of it, just to reflect, so the public is aware of it as well. On Project 3, that we already approved, there's a couple of streets that are up for work on that as well. So this isn't all-inclusive of our streets. Project 3 calls out, because we've got some utility work going underneath, Oakview Avenue and Bank Street are going to be finished this year as well. So there are going to be a few other areas. They're just not part of our streets plans. They're part of Project 3 bid as well. So there's quite a few pockets in the, in the community that will be going under service this year.
Could we add that to our Public Works meeting next week, just like communication, getting ahead of...
Yep, I'll bring you, I've got a big map that I can bring out there and share it to you, and try and show it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're ready for it, and communication-wise, so, perfect.
Sure.
All right, we'll move right into Community Center Air Handling Unit. Mr. Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back in January of this year, council gave the go-ahead for staff to take this project out for bid. You approved the plans and specifications. We did have a little bit of electrical concern. That's what took us a little bit of time. The electrical engineer had to sign off on the plans to make sure that the power that we were supplying to replace this unit, we're taking two units out of service and replacing it with one bigger, higher efficient unit. Okay, two variable air control valve boxes as well. So with that, the delay time in our bid process was getting the engineer to make sure, working with Canexus Energy, that everything was on the up and up, which we've checked off all those boxes. So we did take the project out for bid. We did have two companies that bid the project, St. Cloud Refrigeration and McDowell Company. Those bids came in at $503,700. And with McDowell Company, and the other bid from St. Cloud Refrigeration was $541,000. So what staff is looking to do, it's fortunate that McDowell has won the bid, because they do a lot of our maintenance work out there. With that, there was two, there was the base bid and the alternate bid. The alternate bid was the control system that would control our VFDs out there. So combining both of those together, McDowell was still the low bid on the project, and we would like to go ahead and award the base bid and the alternate bid, so we can update the control system as well to a non-proprietary that's more system-friendly, user-friendly for us, to be able to control that system through our technology as well. This project is going to be a little bit cumbersome, because it's gonna be done in phases. We're gonna get some, if you approve it, we'll do some of the duct work and the prep work for this, because the unit, depending on what the report is now, it's anywhere from 24 to 38 weeks duration. So we're targeting the unit replacement itself, if this is approved, that we would do this sometime this fall, so we can limp our system through the hot summer months, and then get into that cool fall temperature, where we can pull this unit off the roof, put the new one on, hopefully have everything else in place, so it's just a plug-and-play at that point, and do all the prep work to that point, so.
Plug-and-play, that'd be...
So.
That'd be nice if that actually happened.
Like I said, we, I feel a little bit better about it, because McDowell's, you know, would be the one doing the work and getting awarded the bid. And they are very familiar with everything that we're doing over there, so it's not like we've got integration of different companies, and the control system is a company that they use a lot and work with as well. So it would put us in a good spot. The budget on this, as I call out here, our CIP had this, so in 2022, we budgeted $537,000 for this. If we, we award the low bid here and take into account the engineering that we've already approved, it puts us slightly over the budget at $4,700. I know BART is coming up tonight to talk about the water softener, which is pretty much significantly under budget. We would make that money up. But the other thing that I talked with our facilities manager over there, and there is a rebate that X, Canexus did confirm with us, that we will apply for, should this get approved. And that rebate is about $30,000, because of the VFDs that we're putting in there. So that would just go to offset this cost and help our CIP. So we should pull this, you know, significantly under budget then, even though we do have the funds if the water softener gets approved as well.
And it's based on a plug-and-play. So we know how that works.
I don't want to hear no compatibility issues.
I want a guarantee on that.
The plug-and-play is going to be for the rooftop unit to be pulled off and put in play. All of the legwork is going to be done this summer.
I feel like you're really, like, cinching up this whole plug-and-play now, like...
That was the comment, on the, on the plug-and-play is the unit, because we can't get the unit tomorrow, so we want to be prepared for the unit when it comes in. So that's what our goal would be to do, is to prepare everything in the summer months. So when the unit does come in, we're not having to do all of the duct work and all of the VFDs or the control units in place. So anybody's welcome to come into the facility and watch us do the work, but I'm, hopefully, the rooftop unit will be just a pop it off, pop the new one on, and we take it there, so.
You're getting this, right?
Wow, I like the confidence you guys have in our capabilities.
I know how projects of this, of, you know, of age have turned out for us, so, yes.
This is my first one at the community center.
Is it? First one?
With the...
Let us lead you down the path.
AHU, so we'll, we'll maybe chart a new course.
All right, well, we'll talk to you in a couple months.
I'll take that, I'll take that challenge.
How does council wish to proceed on this one?
I make a resolution, I make a motion, we pass the Resolution 2317, installing the air exchange unit for the community center. Air handling unit, rather.
All right, so we have a motion 2317, awarding the contract. Made by Mike, second by Robin. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
All right.
Plug-and-play, remember that.
Yep.
It's like a plug-and-play water softener we're about to talk about.
Replacement of the water softener, Mr. Gavins. What do you got for us tonight here?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a RCA for replacement of the water softener at the Becker Community Center. We are coming up on 30 years of the community center, and one of the original items still in that facility is the water softener. So we would like to hopefully get a motion and a second tonight to replace that water softener, hoping to do so before it finally fails on us. The fact that we've stretched it out this long is actually really, really good. As Phil said, the project came in significantly under budget than what we had originally in our CIP ask, and that was due to, when we got started with the project, we discovered that when we first were bidded, when we first bid it out, we were told that there's probably a good chance we'd have to go to a two-tank water softener by the volume of water we have. Everyone that bid it out said that's not the case. We can totally be fine with a one-tank water softener. So that's why the dollar amount is so significant compared to what the original ask was. So as I mentioned, you know, we're pushing almost 30 years on the original water softener. It's still working, but we would like to replace it before it finally fails on us. The life expectancy of the one that we're asking for is around 25 years. The first five years come with a warranty for on, for all non-wearable parts. We have two bids there, one from H2O Pros and the other from Thinkin'. Tonight, looking for a motion and a second to engage with H2O Pros for the replacement of the water softener. And at this point, I can answer any questions.
Is it starting to become an issue?
It's, yeah, it's, it's leaking.
I just saw that, I'm like, oof.
You could see on the bottom of the picture, the cover is sitting down there, because the cover basically has fallen off. And when you look at the cover, it looks like something from like the 70s or something, like it's, it's old, so. And the, the other, the other benefit, too, obviously, with replacing is gonna be much more efficient. We're gonna go through less salt. It just will operate a heck of a lot better. This one, we actually have to go in and set the recharge. Whenever we want to recharge it, the new one will be, you know, automatic with a timer, can do it over the night and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, the, I wouldn't mess around, because if it goes on the blank, you're eating hard water, and that screws up the water heater.
Yeah, and that was just replaced two, three years ago?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Pretty new.
25 years. Is this Thinkin' Salt?
Yes, yep.
But yet they didn't win our bid.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2317, replacing the water softener at the BCC.
I'll second it.
Motion from Mike, second from Becky. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the, all those in favor?
Which company?
H2O Pros.
H2O Pro, okay.
They do the majority of a lot of our plumbing and stuff, and they, they're the ones that currently service it when we do new...
Yeah, I just wanted to get that on there as well.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, Mr. LaRude.
Mayor Bertram, State Council members, the items for consideration on tonight's agenda, consent agenda include the hiring and termination report from Public League Golf Course, approved farm lease of city land with Marty LaFave for the 2023 crop year, approved farm lease of city land with Im Holt Farms for the 2023 crop year, adopt Resolution 23-16, accepting donations from the Becker's Lion Club, $3,000 for Snuffy's Landing Project, and $4,000 for the AED at City Park, approved termination of contract with Metro West for building inspection services, and approved Safe and Sure Service Agreement renewal. And I will stand with, for any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion from Robin, second from Rick. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Payment of the bills.
Motion to pay those.
I'll second.
Motion from Rick, second from Becky. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor can state aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Anniversary announcements for the month of March, we have just one. It's our very own Susan, our deputy clerk. She is celebrating her four years with us, so congratulations.
Already.
I know, right? I told her that at the beginning. I'm like, we have become way too acquainted that it feels like it's much longer than four years.
Oh, I was thinking much shorter. It must have taken me three years just to remember her name.
We're ripping on everybody.
Yeah, well, does council have anything else for the betterment of Becker tonight? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion from Mike, second from Becky. Those in favor can state aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 5:30. We are adjourned at 5:30.